We'll call to order the regular council meeting for the city of DuPont. Roll call, all department heads are present and council members are on their way. I see one walking through the door right now. Please stand with me to do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is theirs, one nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for Good evening, council. Next on our agenda is a presentation of Civic Center Project. Mr. McDonald will present.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Comerbatch. This is an exciting evening for all of us, I think, because this has been -- what? Isn't it?
The fans are going.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me? All right. I'll repeat. It is an exciting evening for all of us because we have invested a lot of time, all of you have, on this Civic Center project. And I provided in a cover memo to the council some of the issues that have been dealt with along the way. And also, you have on your desk a chronology of events that have occurred in the last two and a half years to get to this point. And I was thinking about this project and it kind of reminded me of when I learned how to ski. And when you start, you get on the beginner slope and you're real careful, but sooner or later, you take the chairlift up to the intermediate or advanced and you're standing up there at the top and you're thinking, "How do I get down?" You know, and you've got two choices. You can cannonball down and take the risks, or you can be very careful. And this is one of those things -- I thought I'd use a skiing analogy, just so it might cool us all off a little bit. This is one of those projects where all of us have been doing something that we don't do all the time. And the council and the staff have been very careful and methodical about issues as they came along, tried to use time very carefully. Probably the compelling need was to address the deficit of public facilities, but how to get there was one of the big issues. So if you look at the chronology that I gave you, we started talking about acquiring property in February of 2005 and went through discussions in that regard. We went through the process of engaging Panatoni Design and Helix, and they assisted with a master plan concept and were the first to propose the lease-lease-back financing concept and that whole approach to acquiring public asset. Moved ahead, just a torturous process of actually getting the property out of consent decree and then acquiring both parcels. Engaged the Helix to do some architectural work so that we could get an RFP out there, RFQ first, and then RFP, and tried to use time as judiciously as possible. We have been, in the last three months, working with attorneys from K&L Gates on the leases that implement this mechanism, funding mechanism for this project and the public-private partnership. And that was always an important concept. And when this went to the public in town hall meetings, one of the things that was interesting and intriguing to the public was to have both public uses and private uses and to have some synergy. So here we are. We have been through the process of negotiating leases. We're just about at the launch. You've received copies, draft copies of those leases and have now an opportunity to, pretty quick, to talk to our attorneys. I'd like to thank everybody on the team and the council for all the work that has been invested in this project. I think that this is one of those legacy events that, as a staff and as elected officials, that you may have one or two of these in your career. And this is a big one. And, you know, this is a unique city because it is not just a normal city. It's grown like crazy and it has acute facility deficits and we're growing the organization and we have to address some issues that are crisis-related and we've been about doing that. I would like to thank the council. I'd like to thank the staff that invested hours and hours and hours and hours, all the department heads and line staff that were involved in the designs and the needs analysis. I'd like to thank Councilmember Coffey for her engagement over the last -- really, she was on the first selection committee when we picked Pardini and has kind of slogged through this whole process and been, as council lays on, and has been very involved in the last three or four months as we try to get this closer and closer to action. So I would like to give Councilmember Coffey an opportunity to say a few words and then I'd like to bring up our -- introduce our attorneys from K&L Gates and take any questions that you may have. So, Councilmember Coffey?
Well, I am very excited tonight. This is a culmination of a lot of hard work and I'd really like to thank Dawn Shower. She has really put in a lot of time on this project. We're very fortunate to have the department heads that we have. And I think that we are well represented with the firm K&L Gates. I feel very confident that they are looking out for our interests and I believe that we are going to come with a good solution to this Civic Center project with that.
All right. I'd like to introduce -- I failed to mention Ross Swanson as well, and he's been our project manager and has done yeoman work on this, and I'd like to thank Ross as well. But his work isn't done. Nobody's work's done. We've still got to get this thing going. I'd like to introduce Jerry Johnson from K&L Gates. I think, Jerry, I don't know whether I would call you the lead attorney, but I'll do that. And Scott Osborne also. And I -- make sure you get chairs here. And Nancy Maris. They are here to take any questions that you may have on the concept. And actually, I think you have an outline in your packet, and I think probably if it's okay with the council, I would let Jerry walk through that outline and then come to specific questions for clarification because I believe that they will answer your questions as they make their presentation. So with that, Jerry, if you'd like to begin.
Thanks. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you about this project this evening and thank you very much for bringing us into it. We appreciated the opportunity to work on a project that's so important to you all and also to work with the team that you've assembled. I would echo Bill's comments about Dawn and Ross and Penny. Lot of volunteer time on her part. We think of her as part of our team in many respects, so this has been a very good experience from our standpoint, so thank you again for that. There are three of us here because in this day and age, the legal business has also tended to become increasingly specialized, like many professions. So I get involved in a lot of public-private partnerships, both for public entities and for private parties who are doing joint venture projects with public entities. So that was one of the reasons, I think, that the city was interested in having my involvement in this project. Scott Osborne is a partner in our real estate practice and he pulled the laboring oar with respect to the drafting and the negotiation of the three principal agreements that we're prepared to brief you on and answer your questions about tonight. Nancy Naras is familiar to many of you as your bond counsel and she also has been involved in this project and will speak to you about the financing approach that we recommend for the project. I would also just like to say that your regular city attorney, Shelley, has also been a very cooperative participant in this project and we appreciated the opportunity to work with her and she's made a number of material contributions to our efforts along the way. As we've come up across some issues, Shelley has contributed to the solution of a number of them, so appreciated that association as well. First of all, just without reiterating what Bill said tonight and wrote in his memorandum that you all have received, we were obviously working to achieve a number of public purposes for the city. The first was to meet the need for state-of-the-art public facilities of a scale that can respond to the city of the size that you have become as well as accommodate continued and future growth. Playing catch-up a little bit there in terms of the scale of services you need in order to meet public demand and at the same time trying to foresee a situation in which you will be a little stronger and more comfortable financially, also kind of catching up there to your aspirations and requirements. Bill mentioned that we focused on the lease-lease-back mechanism for a couple of reasons. It provided the best combination of being able to finance the project, given the constraints of your current debt capacity and at the same time produce the project expeditiously without it being a public work and enabling us at the same time to accomplish an effective risk shift to the developer-contractor, which we're not always able to accomplish in a purely straightforward public works context. We also had, as part of the mix in this project, the additional property that you all own adjacent to the Civic Center campus site, and that was part of the proposals, you're well aware. And we worked hard to produce an agreement with the developer that will yield a return and Scott can -- respectable fair market value return and Scott can speak to that. That is the piece of our conversation with the Panatoni firm that we are not yet resolved on. We still have some issues with the Civic Campus component, but it's really down to the last penny or two on the table in terms of the project budget and going back and forth with the developer. The land lease has further to go and we were really focusing on getting the Civic Campus piece done first for probably obvious reasons. Just to recap a little bit about what has happened since we became involved, we were selected by you all at the time that the first RFP was already out. And when proposals came back, we were just getting up to speed and it had been our perception that we probably were better off making a clearer separation between the negotiation of the transaction with respect to Civic Center Campus on the one hand and the additional property on the other. We also had a wide disparity, relatively wide disparity, in the proposals that were coming back from the three proponents. And we had these -- all three of these proponents did not initially evidence a high degree of experience or sophistication with the lease-lease-back mechanism. So we realized that we had a little bit of education to do with whomever we would end up selecting, you would end up selecting. So with Dawn and Ross and Bill's substantial help, we went forward with a clarification and an addendum, really, to the original proposal to try to address all three of those issues. The proposals that we got back from that were much better and much clearer, and I think that facilitated your decision to go with the Panatoni firm. In our conversations with them over the past two, three months, I think we all feel that in general that that negotiation has been a -- certainly has been mutually respectful. It has been mutually informative. It has been constructive. It was not without some issues along the way. The project is not simple and it's not small. And I think, if anything, the biggest problem we've had over the course of the conversation has been with bringing Panatoni up to speed with what the lease-lease-back approach really meant for them and the deal that we had in mind. And then also getting them to understand what was going to happen if the city chooses, as we recommend, to issue certificates of participation when the asset is completed. So as I say, we're actually quite close. I think that between now and the second meeting, we will have this all nicely buttoned up for you. It's certainly our expectation and aspiration. And with that, I'd like to turn to Scott, have him walk through the agreements for you, and then Nancy will take it from there to explain the financing issues and particularly the COP approach. So, Scott?
Thank you, Jerry. It's a relatively straightforward transaction. You might ask, then why is all this -- why do I need a 45-page document then if it's so straightforward? But let me start with the overall scheme of things, which is a lease-lease-back. So by definition, I've got a lease from the city, or the city is going to be leasing to Panatoni or a firm designated a development entity formed by Panatoni. That development entity is then going to lease back completed facilities to the city. The city will have an obligation to pay rent upon the completion of those facilities and then also has an option to purchase the facilities at a fixed price, fixed declining price over the term of the lease. So the first document that you have is the lease from the city to Panatoni, and that's a relatively straightforward document. Rent commences about 18 months after the document is signed to allow them time to construct the facility. Ground rent payments are then made from Panatoni to the city or to the -- I'm sorry. Is that better? Yeah, I'm sorry. Payments are then made -- rental payments are then made from the lessor to the city. The lease-back arrangement is a more complex document and it's basically structured in three distinct phases. First, there's an obligation on the part of Panatoni to construct the facilities at a fixed price, which is established by a budget that's attached to the agreement. And as Jerry has indicated, that budget still has a couple of moving parts to it and it's not finalized, but we're down to, I would say, within 1% of the total cost of having everything resolved in the budget itself. So the first sections of the lease deal with the construction of those facilities and what those facilities are supposed to look like in terms of plans and specifications. Then there is a section in the middle of the lease that deals with how -- an option on the part of the city to have the project financed through certificates of participation so that the lease will then be assigned to a trustee who will then pay Panatoni a fixed price for the lease, pay off their costs. And at that point in time, your landlord, so to speak, for the city, for the facilities will be this trustee on behalf of the holders of these certificates of participation. Then the remainder of the lease deals with the city's ongoing obligations after the building has been completed and the obligation to pay rent commences. And basically, at that point in time, the city has the complete obligation to make rental payments and make all the payments associated with maintaining and operating the building as if you were the owner of it. And there's virtually no obligation on the part of the landlord to make any payments whatsoever with respect to the facility. So at that point in time, it's really the city's expense. Fairly straightforward, but it does take a few pages to actually document that. Oh, yeah, there is one added complication with the way that the lease is structured. The city is not able to incur a debt in excess of its debt capacity at the current time and the debt capacity is slightly less than the total cost of the project. So in order to overcome that, what we've built into the lease is an initial phase, which is everything but the City Hall building. And then an option on the part of the city, once your debt capacity is increased at the beginning of next year, to increase the scope of the project to encompass both the public safety facility and the City Hall. That election will be made in January and it's anticipated, based on the numbers that everybody's working with, that your debt capacity should be sufficient at that point in time to finance the entire project.
And the delivery cost of the City Hall is fixed now, so that is all part of the fixed price. We just tell them that that's really part of that, when your debt capacity gets big enough to pay.
The final lease for the commercial space, which is across the street, as Jerry indicated, is still a little bit of a work in progress with respect to primarily the rent. The structure of that lease, though, is fairly straight -- again, fairly straightforward. It's a 50-year ground lease. Panatoni will develop the property and with commercial buildings. It's a little unclear at this point in time how many buildings they'll place on the property. We think at least four, but possibly more than that, depending on what the demand is. There is a development schedule laid out in the lease. Those dates are currently blank, but basically the benchmarks are set at six-month intervals. And if Panatoni does not proceed with the development in accordance with that schedule, then the city has the right to terminate the lease, bring the property back, and then relit it to somebody who would develop it in a more timely manner. The Panatoni does have the option of segregating the lease and I think their business plan currently calls for probably a sale of the buildings upon construction to owner-users so they want to be able to separate the leases out into discreet leases with those owner-users. So you may end up ultimately, rather than just having one ground lease for the five-acre parcel, you might end up with four or five different ground leases, one ground lease associated with each building. And the rent's still -- we're still jostling around about the rent a little bit to get to a fair market value. It is a long-term lease, so the rent will escalate on set patterns, probably at 10-year intervals based on a CPI adjustment. And then there are options at the end of the lease and prior to the commencement of the option periods, the property will be reappraised and a fair market rental value will be charged or the rent will be adjusted to a fair market rental value if, in fact, it's gotten out of whack over the term of the lease. Nancy?
As Jerry mentioned, I'm Nancy Naras and I'm a bond lawyer and have had the pleasure of serving as the city's bond attorney for years, enjoy catching up with Tamara on the LID that we both worked on. I did the financing for that and it's been a while since we've done any financing, but it's a pleasure to be here and to see how the town has transformed. Wonderful. This is a little bit unique, but a number of municipalities around the country have done this kind of financing, so I'll explain how it works. Under Washington law, on this lease-lease-back statute, which is quite specific, and you are authorized to do what you're doing, and one of the key components of that is that the city cannot be responsible for the cost of construction. The developer has to take that on. So part of the, as has been mentioned, the documents provide that Panatoni is required to come up with their own financing to finance the construction and that it is a lease and your lease payments will begin once the building is finally complete and can be occupied. And then you will have the obligation to make lease payments. And to get the city the best financing available and the best terms of the lease, there is a municipal security out there that is called a certificate of participation. And there's actually billions of dollars' worth of these done. Not a lot in Washington for a couple of reasons, but for example, in California, because of their particular state law, almost every municipal project, a city hall, roads even, are done as certificates of participation. They are a municipal security and they are recognized by the Internal Revenue Service and interest can be tax-exempt on certificates of participation, just like on bond interest if it's going to be a governmentally-used project like this will be. And so how it will work is we have drafted the lease now to say that when the building is complete, the city can direct Panatoni to assign the lease to a bank trust department and they have agreed to do that. And so the city will request that Panatoni do this. The lease will then be assigned to a bank trust department, like US Bank, Bank of New York, who will be the nominal landlords of the building. And you will then be obligated to make your lease payments to US Bank. An underwriter, in this case it will be AG Edwards, will then market these certificates of participation, just like a bond, and folks can buy them. And it will be structured just like a bond. You will owe an annual principal rent payment and semi-annual interest. The interest will be exactly the rate on the certificate, so it will be a tax-exempt interest rate that you will pay. The term will be 30 years, I think is what we've decided on. You'll have an ability to prepay it likely at about 10 years without any penalty if you want. So you will just make your lease payments every six months to the bank, who will then pay the certificate holders. And if you buy one of these, you can buy them in $5,000 denominations and it gives you the right to a portion of the city's lease payments. You pledge the -- your general fund, it's a non-voted debt of the city, which is authorized by state law, and it really looks, for all intents and purposes, for the city like a general, long-term bond, but it's a certificate because you're making lease payments. And that's how it works. Again, they're very recognized. There's a big market in these. One wrinkle in Washington, which again has worked out because Panatoni does have a bank, is that these won't actually be issued until the building is complete and your lease payments can be made. And there'll be an offering document and all the general types of documents you do with the financing. And they will be viewed. It's the city's credit, the rating will be on the city, and there'll be no distinction.
You have, I think, a memo from AG Edwards that explains the side-by-side You have a, I think, a memo from AG Edwards that explains the side-by-side GEO bond to the COP, and demonstrates that the marginal difference is very small. And so you'll have that as a part of your material. And I think Nancy, you may have seen that, I'm not sure. If you had any questions on that, while Nancy's up, we could take that.
Just one thing again. If you were to issue bonds for this project, whether it's non-voted bonds or voted bonds, which are the UTGO bonds that AG Edwards mentions, those would be used not to make lease payments, but to actually either acquire the facility or use it to construct the facility. And so that would require just a whole different process here. It would be a public work in something that you would need to go back and do just a standard generic municipal public bidding process where you have plans and you say, will you build this for us? And you have the construction risk there in that case. So it's really a different model. But I think in the market, they're really viewed, again, as the city's general obligation credit, so they're very comparable.
All right. At this point, any questions that you may have for either of these three brilliant attorneys?
Yeah, I was just wondering, you were talking about that Panatoni has to go to a certain bank for all this loan. We just got a new bank here in Dupont, it's Venture Bank. Is there a possibility that Panatoni could possibly choose Venture, or do they have their own separate bank they do choose from?
They have, I mean, they're certainly, I'm sure they talked to various banks, they have a bank lined up. And the terms are quite favorable because you end up paying as one of the budgeted owners.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the relationship between, you know, the bank and town and so forth. Okay.
One of the reasons that we do like Panatoni is that they're big, they're very capable, deep resources, and they probably organize their financing on a corporate basis, but it's certainly something that I think we would pass on. From their standpoint, it's just construction finance, and, you know, they build dozens of projects a year, probably maybe more.
Any further questions? Jennifer?
John?
This analysis from AG Edwards was strictly set up to try to, oh, sorry. This analysis from AG Edwards was strictly set up to try to build a structure which you could compare the two financing mechanisms side by side. And doesn't necessarily, so when we talk about average annual debt service here of a million nine, that wasn't necessarily what we were originally talking about, or we don't know where that's going yet, or that's still to be...
It was based on a principal amount that corresponds to the budget of the project.
Right. Actually, no, when he did this, he just took it at a straight 17 million, just for comparative purposes. You know, the debt service will actually be structured on the actual final cost of the project, which, as our team here said, we're within probably 1% of nailing down the final project, which should come in lower than that 17 million. And then the debt service schedules will be. So what you've seen before on the projections as far as what the debt service will probably be is closer to what it will be than what's in this memo.
For now, it's been 16.5, 16.7, but it's all about, it's always a small.
Okay. For comparison purposes, I see you're using a different discount rate for the two analyses. I've never seen the term "all-in TIC" before.
That's pretty common. And what it does is it factors in the cost of issuance, so it's a more genuine interest rate. You know, there's a couple of ways you can calculate your overall interest cost, and one of them is just the coupon rates you're paying. The true interest cost factors in the cost of issuance. So it's a more, you know, appropriate, what is this cost for you to borrow? Because you finance your cost of issuance, it's part of the financing.
So it's slightly more expensive to finance the COP than, under this analysis, that's the conclusion, or?
Well, it's just, there's a very slight difference, right, in interest rate. But again, if you were to go the general, the bond route, then you need to go back to square one and do a whole different process than you've done. You can't, you couldn't continue working with Panatoni. You would need to have your own plans, get them out, you know, publish notice. And so it's for anyone's guess what the actual cost would be, and then you don't get a fixed price as well.
Right.
If a fixed price stands between now and the time that it would take for us to do that for you, we're at substantial risk of inflation and cost of construction, which is, you know, in all the digits, so.
Right. Okay, no, I was just trying to understand the difference between the two columns there.
And there is just a, and he ran it on voted general obligation bonds, which if it was non-voted bonds, you actually might even be just 0.01% off, I think, you know, because those are, those have a little, slightly better credit because they're excess property taxes, the voted ones. Yeah. So that's probably the best case, the difference would be that.
Some options for straightforward bonds also would not let you do it all at once. You might find yourself in a situation where you have to do the first building, and then when you have that capacity, you can do the second building because you can't commit yourselves to a construction, to a contract for the construction of the building on a public work basis without having the resources to actually build. So you would have to wait until you had that capacity. You're starting with this mechanism, let's just get started with everyone else's.
And the two bonds, by doing one versus two bond issues, you definitely get economies of scale and just the cost of issuance. And there's certain things that you have to do, no matter whether you have a $1 million bond or a, you know, $17 million bond. So that would, so it is certainly a legitimate comparison for this, but it's not reflective necessarily of what the actual cost would be if you did, you start square one, did a bond.
Can I keep going? You mentioned the plan essentially is to go forward with the first Phase 1, I believe you said, was the public safety building, the grounds and the public safety building. Then after January 1, we would hope that our debt capacity is such that we could continue with Phase 2. What happens if we don't do Phase 2? Chose not to do Phase 2?
As drafted, the election is yours. You have the right to provide them a notice in January, assuming your debt capacity is sufficient to support the additional approximately $2.9 million of construction costs for the City Hall facility. If you don't give them that notice, then they're going to build the public safety building, that's it.
Okay.
But that is your election.
Does it, in January, if they were not, were not given the notice to go forward, we don't give them the notice to go forward and build the City Hall building, does it change the terrain of the rest of the, I mean, obviously, all the payments would change because there's no longer a $2.9 million cost here, but does it change any of the other, the terrain of the other, you know, for instance, the southern half of the development, or?
No. No, the only effect that it has by not giving them the notice is that the City Hall is not built.
And the lease payments?
The lease payments would be lower.
The lease payments would be lower. Thank you.
My question is in regards to the commercial development you discussed. You talked about, and I'm just trying to clarify this for myself so that I make sure I understand it, you mentioned that there was a six-month schedule for the buildings to be built?
There's a planning process by which, a series of dates, when you read the lease, there's a series of dates that are currently blank, but they'd be completed in about six-month intervals for them to do certain things, leading to a construction date for the first building no later than, I think, in early 2009.
Okay, so...
After that, they're required, the lease is structured so that the payments, the lease payments on the ground phase in over a four-year period. So the first year, they're paying 25% of the rent, second year, they're paying 50% of the rent, third year, they're paying 75% of the rent, and the fourth year, they're paying 100% of the rent. And the thought is, is that that corresponds with the phasing schedule that they initially gave us as to how they plan to develop the property, one building a year for about four years.
My concern was that if, for some reason, Panatoni was able to perform and weren't able to build the structures as the timeline scheduled, and we were forced to break that agreement and try and find somebody else, I just wanted to know, did we have enough cushion built in that we would be able to do that? Time-wise, as far as not needing that income from the development investment to pay?
Well, that's, I guess that's a matter of how you're going to budget it. The election to terminate the lease is on the part of the city. So if the city determines that it wants to terminate the lease so that it can achieve the benefits of developing the property, then it can choose to do so. But corresponding with that, of course, is the fact that once you terminate the lease, then the ground rental payments would stop.
Right.
So you probably, from a planning standpoint, you probably would want to explore the possibility of who else in the community would be willing to lease the property prior to the time that you elected to terminate the lease.
The worst-case scenario for the city, in our view, is that you have committed the property on a long-term lease to a non-performing developer, and you may be getting some rent from that, but the asset is not doing what you expect for the community. You don't get sales tax on the construction, you don't have people working there, spending money, and so on. And so there are many reasons why you wanted this development to occur, and you wanted to give you the ability to effectively bounce them for somebody else if performance were not achieved.
And that's exactly what I'm looking for, is what's the worst-case scenario? And are we prepared to deal with that if, for some unknown reason, lightning strikes them down and we have to find somebody else? My other question is regarding the COPs, and if AG Edwards is underwriting that, would it be possible for us to request that they give first right of purchase to Dupont citizens?
You know, usually, they're more than happy to do that and advertise.
Wonderful.
You know, the one thing about municipal debt, because the interests are so low because it's tax-exempt, and oftentimes, it's not all that attractive to...
It's mostly commercial institutions that buy it.
But they're usually very happy to do, sell it locally and put ads in the paper.
I think that would be, that would be great for our community to be able to have that opportunity first. Thank you.
Roger?
Thank you. I think all of us are in favor to move forward. However, we see things happening in cities nearby, University Place, Auburn, Renton, where civic development hasn't been completed on a timely basis. So I share the concern of Councilmember Kraus here. Can you provide us directly or indirectly some assurances that this developer is going to give us a completed project? Knowing very well, we will work with that developer best we can, but I don't want Dupont to go the route of some of these other cities in Pierce and King County.
Well, with respect to the civic center portion of the public safety building in the City Hall, the developer's under a contractual obligation to deliver that to the city within 390 days from the day of commencement of construction at a fixed price, assuming the city makes no change orders along the way. So I would encourage none of you to visit the site while it's being constructed, so take a vacation, do something else.
Not likely.
But...
If you have nice plans, you want that.
Yeah. So with the civic center portion of the project, there is, and Panatoni's responsible contractor has sufficient financial resources in order to perform its obligations. Now, having said that, if something, the world comes to an end tomorrow or there's a financial disaster, you never know, but flip side of it is that you're absolutely not obligated to pay one nickel in rent until those buildings are finished and you can occupy them. On the commercial side, it's a little, it's a little different because ultimately, the pace of the development of the commercial ground lease to the south will be determined by the market. And if there's a market for the buildings, then Panatoni will build those buildings just as quickly as it possibly can because that's, it is a commercial builder, and it makes its money by building facilities and then selling them at a profit. It's an emergent builder. But if there is no market, if there is a lack of demand for commercial space of that nature in this area, then the development will be slower until that market develops. So civic center, yes. The pace of development of the commercial side is going to be market-driven.
The only other thing I guess I would add to that is that with respect to those other communities and working with those projects, the scale that they were trying to accomplish there is much different than the scale of what is meant to be in the property here. And those projects also represent, as Councilman mentioned, as Auburn, University Place, represent different strategies for downtowns and that. And your situation's pretty different. This land is right smack in the middle of what appears to be a pretty successful growing, expanding community. So with more, even more development on the horizon, it's time-related, it's a whole project. So it's, there are some significant differences that would be encouraging to me or you.
And then I'm actually familiar with University Place, but they actually just signed their lease with the developer in May. So it took them that long to find a developer. And, but the lease, and it's actually just finalized in June, actually, the lease.
Megan?
I just have one quick question, but I also had a comment, and then I really appreciate the thoroughness that the three of you have taken in explaining this all to us. So if we had no doubt, if we had doubts from reading it, we have no doubts from your presentation. I appreciate that. I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Westman's question. So in other words, what you're saying is the remedy, if they essentially breach the contract, is that we don't have to pay rent, or, you know, we don't have to make lease payments until it's completed?
That's correct. You're not under any obligation to make any lease payments until the buildings are completed and ready for occupancy.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Bill? Go ahead.
Wanted to request that you move to the item that has the first reading, but that would take a change in the agenda. Attorneys here.
We're going to, I'm going to ask the council's permission to kind of go out of sequence on the agenda, and if we could go to Item 14A while we still have our legal team here. And if there's any questions, we're going to open it up for a public comment in a few I don't think that...
Ask the attorney if he needs to. Okay. All right.
I move to approve, or to move Item 14A to Item 4B, or Item 5.
A motion has been made. Is there any discussion? A motion has been made by Councilman Kraus, seconded by Councilman Wilcox, to move Item 14A forward. I'll call for the question. The question has been called. All in favor?
Discussion.
I'm sorry.
Yes. I'd like to draw your attention to the cover sheet for 14A. I'd like to draw your attention to the cover sheet for 14A. And if I could, get some clarification under fiscal impact.
This is just a motion to move it.
All right.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. We're with, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Nay. This motion carries seven, zero. We will now move to 14A on the agenda. And Mr. Bill McDonald will present. And please use the mics when we speak. The fans are on, and we really can't hear.
Well, this ordinance would give the mayor the authority to sign the leases and would initiate the order to proceed with Panatoni. This is a first reading. If you have a question about, we kind of understand what this is all about. If you have a question about fiscal impact, I'm willing to answer that.
Okay. Roger, you can ask your question now.
Yes, the point I'd like to have some clarification on, under the fiscal impact, it states, "The Civic Center project is a major capital project with funding requirements in excess to $16 million. The project is currently appropriated in the Capital Facilities Fund. The city will dedicate REIT funds and ground lease revenues to service long-term debt." My concern is, to what extent are we going to obligate REIT funds to this project? If it's 100% REIT funds to this project, that doesn't leave any REIT funds available for any other projects that could very well be wished to pursue under the capital project funds. So, my concern there is some sort of clarification on percentage of the REIT funds, or dollar amounts to the REIT funds, or something of this nature, so that we're not just taking all funds and putting it in one direction without the possibility of REIT funds being used for other projects.
Okay. I'm going to refer that over to Bill.
Yeah, I, probably Dawn would be able to give you a percentage. And that's going to be adjusted as we go along here. It does not take all of the REIT funds. It is a major drain on the REIT funds. You also have the revenues that were talked about that would be generated from the ground lease. Those combination, in combination, will service or make the lease payment. Dawn, do you want to kind of give a rough, rough estimate of what the percentage will be?
Actually, I have not figured it out on a percentage basis. What I, what I did, and which was distributed to, as well as council, it was distributed to the financiers on both sides of this project, was a preliminary Civic Center financial projection. And if you, if you looked at that, enough of the ground, well, all of 100% of the ground lease revenues, which in the first few years of the project aren't significant, because as Mr. Osborne talked about, that's going to be ramping up over the years. But the rest of the debt service would be paid from REIT funds. Currently, in the projection, I think we put about $1.1 million. It'll probably be less than that. It'll probably be closer, depending on where we come up with the final project. It'll be somewhere between $975,000 to $1 million. So, that would be a fairly good proportion of the REIT funds on an ongoing basis. But there's also a good enough fund balance in the REIT that it would never, the fund balance of REIT currently, and in the out-years, would not drop below $1 million, which means that there's still money in that fund to appropriate towards other projects. I'm not sure if that answers your question. And in that projection, there was also some money that was allocated in for parks, a minor amount, but it was per the Parks Master Plan, I believe, that Peter provided to me. So, that there is money left in the fund. It's not being 100% used towards the Civic Center project, nor was that the intention.
Well, I guess the concern I have is, if there's a particular project that we would like to move forward on, that would involve the REIT money, and to come back and say, "Sorry, but we just don't have it because it's going to the Civic Center and making payments." Now, I guess that's the reality of what it is. So, the second project would have to be put on hold until such time that it does build up, or gets pared down, or something of that nature. I'm just a little uncomfortable not knowing if it's going to take all, or we can initially allocate 75% of the REIT money going that way, or whatever it might be. I don't want us to cut off the possibility of having further capital facility programs and facilities that could qualify for the REIT funds. And that's a concern. I certainly will vote in favor of this, but I still have that concern and be watching it in the future.
Absolutely. And we will be as well, to, you know, to monitor. And again, any projects that the council would be wanting to do, we would obviously do a financial analysis on them as well, to see what funds we could draw from, and REIT included, so.
Any further questions? I'm going to now open it up to, for public comment, since this is the first read. If there's any members of the audience who would like to come up and speak on the Civic Center project, you may do so at this time. Please use the mic, sign in, state your name and address for the record.
Is the mic on?
It's on when the button's up.
Okay. Dawn Dresser, 1437 Huron Court. And it's, basically, I got a question. And the question is, is this data going to be available to the public so the public can have a opportunity to look at this, this plan to develop our Civic Center? It's a major project to the, to the citizens, and, you know, we don't want to go down the road without somebody coming up down the road and not understanding it, or, in other words, buy-in on the, on the project. And so, basically, is the data, before you have the second reading, because if somebody has a, right now, you know, I don't know what question they ask if I had a question. Maybe I wouldn't have a question if I had all the data. But I don't, and- The answer's yes. There'll be a full public disclosure. The leases are a public document now. And that would, that's the way it has to be. And by the time we get to second reading, there'll be more detail.
Thank you.
James Patton, 1737 McDonald Avenue, DuPont. My question's about our legal liability and what sort of insurance coverage is going to be, is going to be in place during the course of construction and then also after this has been completed. Is the developer and the general contractor going to be required in this lease to have their own liability insurance during, during the course of construction? And then also, once it's completed, at what point is it going to be possibly turned back over in part, or in whole, back to the city? I'm concerned with construction defects and lawsuits that may arise out of construction defects, and also liability that may arise due to injuries on the, on the site during the course of construction, and then also afterwards.
I think Scott probably would be the best to answer this. I think the answer that you'll get will be one you'd like to hear.
The lease requires, during the course of construction, that the-
Please pull the mic up to you.
The developer, who's, who's different from the general contractor. But the developer indemnify and hold the city harmless for many and all claims, causes of action, liability arising through the course of construction. There's also a requirement that they maintain insurance coverage, so that we've got a source of funding for that, as well as property damage, kind of the builder's risk policy, so that if something happens along the line, there are funds to reconstruct the facility. The insurance of the facility post-completion is something that is up to the city to decide as to how it wants to manage its risk for its physical assets, which may or may not include insurance, or may include some sort of an insurance pool with the municipalities. There is, the last document in the lease, as an exhibit, is the warranty that is being provided by the contractor, which is basically a one-year warranty against defects of workmanship and materials. And so, about 11 months into the, after occupancy, I'm assuming that the city will conduct a walkthrough with its architects to note any defects that need to come back and be corrected. So, fairly, you know, fairly straightforward, commercial-type arrangements with regard to indemnities and warranties.
One more question, kind of following on to that. The liability insurance is going to be in place, or is the city going to put any sort of requirement on what that limit is? What is the limit on that, on the liability?
I'd have to go back and look, but I think it's $2 million per occurrence, but, as a minimum, but I, again, the structure of the lease and the structure of the arrangement is that the city is contracting with the developer. The developer is responsible to deliver the building. The developer, in turn, is entering into a general contract with a related entity, nevertheless, but it is a separate entity. And then that contractor will maintain its own insurance policies as well. So, you're going to have a couple of different levels of coverage. And the city itself will be a couple of items, a couple of steps removed from actual site control. And under the terms of the agreement, the city has no control of the site during construction, and specifically disclaims any undertaking to maintain any control of the site during construction, because that's really something that the contractor is responsible for, and the city doesn't really want to be, be involved in those decisions, which could create some liability.
Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak?
First of all, I'd really like to thank you for everything that-
Please state your name and address for the record.
Tamara Jenkins, 1424 Montgomery Street. I did sign up in the back. First of all, I want to really thank you for what you've done today. In 2003, when we discussed raising the tax of the dollar, our focus, when we went out and talked to people, was public safety and parks. And when we went out with the EMS levy, our focus was public safety. So, it's, it's very encouraging to see that we have a phasing plan for the Civic Center that is a focus on public safety and looking at our debt capacity. I'd like to comment on the comment that Mr. Dresser shared with us on wanting to see the plan. A few years ago, when we started out on this adventure to define getting Merritt Pardini on board, Councilmember Coffey, thank you very much for seeing this through. When we looked at getting that consultant on board, this project has evolved, and we have done. There was some public outreach, quite extensive public outreach in the beginning. And now would be a good time just to maybe even post it on the web, all the stuff that is, legal documents, Councilmember Westman, as you mentioned, legal documents as far as the lease, the financial executive summary, and any drawings associated with the Civic Center. That way, folks in our community, and residents in our community, involved in our community, can actually click and see and have an opportunity to comment, similar to the opportunity that we give the citizens when we have maybe a land use application on our website. So, thank you again for addressing unmet space needs, unmet training needs, and focusing on public safety.
If I could add, we will be posting all of the information that we have in digital form onto the website. Up until this point, it has been proprietary confidential information, and we posted only what we legally could. But now that, you know, we've moved to the next phase of this, we will be able to post more of the information onto the website. So, most of that will be occurring, hopefully, tomorrow.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I was going to say, Dawn, and thank you for saying that.
Can I ask her? I'll say it.
Go ahead. No, go ahead, La.
I was just going to ask Dawn, will this be like the town paper and the newsletter that we put out, too? Is information?
I'm not sure where we're at on the newsletter deadline and how we could, or, you know, but, but the more information will be shared, we'll also have a counter copy of the information that the public could come in and look at here at City Hall as well. So, we'll make it as available as we can through the means that we have available. Yeah, well.
Council comments. Roger?
Yes. We did have a citizen express a concern about the notification in the community and possible involvement by the citizenry on this project. I understand that the second reading is scheduled for July the 24th. I'm just suggesting that perhaps there could be a public forum before that time to, again, enlighten our community as far as what is being proposed and what will be voted upon on July the 24th, and if that would be appropriate or not. I just wanted to do a follow-up on what was suggested here, that we somehow or another have greater involvement by the community.
We could have our study session, which the date has been changed, but July 17th is the date that is open. And if need be, we could ask the legal team to come back, and we'll advertise that if that's a good day with their schedules. And I encourage everyone to write all of your questions down. And I don't want anybody to say when the bulldozers start that, that they did not know we were building a Civic Center. So, we want everybody informed and on board with what the council is, is doing. And I think that day may be available. Mr. McDonald, the 17th?
The one that was scheduled for the 17th has to slide to the 19th because of the conflict with the chief. So, yeah, it would be available. I would, I would like to be able to be very focused about what is provided at that meeting. I don't know that we want to have that, our entire legal team coming down here. We're talking about the concept, and we're talking about the plans, and kind of that type of a thing. I'd like to get some guidance on that, so that we can be focused.
Okay. Is that what you're referring to, the plans and the total concept and the finance packet?
Well, I understood Mr. Dresser to indicate the data that he was concerned about not having or would like to be able to receive. We understand it will be posted on the website, so that would answer that. But here again, yes, a generalized discussion, let the community know what's happening, what we're going to be voting upon, and perhaps get a little reaffirmation about the whole process, so we have some good feelings about what we are about ready to launch on this $16, $17 million project.
Megan?
I, I just have, I'm just throwing this out here, it just popped into my head. But if there's any way that we could put up a notice next to the sign that says Civic Center, which is put up a, you know, type something up that says, "This is on the website," and, you know, "The council's voting on this day," or something like that, that might be helpful, because people seem to notice new signs when they're driving around, and that, just one more way to reach the public, and then we can refer them to our website, if that's possible.
That's possible. So, what we will work on is something that's fairly focused, that gives the, kind of the overall concept, talks about the concept of the leases, not in excruciating detail, some detail on the, on the financial pieces of this that we have at, by that time, you know, and do the- and do the best we can to just engage the public in what we're trying to accomplish.
Absolutely. I think that will wear penny... Did you have a question? Okay.
Go ahead, John.
Don, or actually, John Darling, or even Bill there, I apologize, it's been a while since I looked at the funding source document that you handed out there, Don, but I do remember back to the Capital Facilities Plan, when we passed the fire impact fees, a portion of those impact fees were supposed to go for paying for the fire, the fire building. Are those built, are those built into the payment plans?
They are not at this point. Most of those funds, from what we've been able to ascertain, would be used on fire equipment that's also identified in the Capital Facilities Plan that probably is going to cost more than it was budgeted for when the Capital Facilities Plan was done back in 2003 or 2004, I'm not sure when. We need to take a look at how those, how those impact fees are tracking, how they're coming in, and whether we could use them for this as a possible funding source.
This isn't something that needs to be done within the next couple of weeks, but I would like to do that. I actually went back and pulled out the Capital Facilities Plan and read back through it, and this was one of the first things I worked on when I got here on council. But it is supposed to be visited annually, revisited annually, and I think maybe the, how those funds are, since we basically walked away from a lot of the Capital Facilities Plan as it is, it would seem to me that we ought to, we ought to revisit how those funds are being spent, and maybe, maybe channel more of them into this project than, because that was, that was certainly part of the intent of the ordinance that we passed in, putting the fire impact fees in place.
Right. And we do actually review that, and Mr. Darling does at the time of the budget, and we take a look at what the projects are that are in there and move those into the budget if it is their year as they come up on the plan. And the fire equipment, we have been moving on, you know, the big component of that is the public facilities, so, which we're now getting to.
The point is well-taken. I do think we need to be able to demonstrate that we're tracking those.
There was also at the time, and I, you know, Peter Orshali, there was also a time how we were able to spend those fire impact fees and how we were able to spend the REIT fees on paying for fire facilities. And if I recall, it's zeroing out the amount that we were going to pay of REIT fees towards the, towards the fire station for a specific reason at the time that was brought up by Quadrant, who, if you recall, was rejecting, objecting rather strenuously to the, to the whole fire impact fee question. So, if we could go back and make sure we're not going to step on ourselves someplace there, I'd appreciate it.
Some of that was, I think the issue was whether or not there was a double billing by Quadrant having to pay the REIT and the fire.
Right. Exactly. I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Next on our...